All right. Ready? Nancy? Good. All right. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see everybody here today. We had a great ribbon cutting grand opening of the East Roswell Park Dog Park today. And just shows the continued activity here in the city of Roswell under the mayor and council's leadership to invest in its assets and resources and the quality of life of Roswell residents. So thank you for all who were there. Thank you for the great job of the team and for the leadership of the elected body. Good evening and welcome to the committee meetings for September 9th, 2025. The elected body president, Mayor Kurt Wilson, council member Christine Hall, council member Allen Sells, council member David Johnson, council member Sarah Beeson, council member Geely Hills, and council member William Mortland. I am Randy Knighton, chief administrative officer, along with chief legal counsel, David Davidson, and our city clerk, Nancy Long. The purpose of committee meetings are for us to convey information to the mayor and city council and discuss items listed on the published agenda, as well as provide updates of vital information germane to the operation of city government. And by ordinance, the committee does consist of the elected body as well as the chief administrative officer who chairs committee meetings. And this is a public meeting, but not a public hearing. Therefore, while we certainly welcome members of the public here, we do not generally take comments or questions during committee meetings unless specifically authorized by mayor and council. Public comments and questions are, of course, received at regular city council meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month, as well as fifth Monday in open forum. We do encourage residents to reach out to our city staff and also to engage our online platforms for information as it is needed. The city web service portal is another mechanism to report any issues or questions and concerns. And also always visit roswell365.com for a calendar of events. The first item on the agenda this evening is the committee meeting minutes for August 12th, 2025. Motion approval by council member Beeson, second by council member Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. On the regular agenda as listed, item number two, consideration of a sidewalk cafe at 4345 Park Square Court 20251723, presented by Jenny Payton, planning and zoning director. Ms. Payton?
Yes, Mayor Wilson. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and council. The item for consideration is the sidewalk cafe in the right of way for the address at 4345 Park Square. Cafe Laban is requesting mayor and council approval of a sidewalk cafe. Mayor and council must approve sidewalk cafes in the right of way. It's located on the north side of Park Square in the northwest corner of the intersection of Park Square and Atlantis Street. And the cafe is now proposing to have two tables with seating for four patrons in the sidewalk area located outside of and adjacent to the front entrance of the building. Once approved, the applicant will be required to renew their sidewalk cafe license annually. So here's an updated site plan. I include this larger one that showed the intersection. I'll breeze past it, but can come back. This shows the much reduced site plan that transportation has fully vetted and felt that this was a much safer alternative. It's just two tables. So you can see the, the property line is actually on the building at the front of the building. So it is just these two tables that are being considered. And again, mayor and council have to approve any kind of use as a sidewalk cafe in the right of way. Staff is now recommending approval with conditions to the site plans submitted on July 29th, that the barriers, I've got a couple double numbers, that the barriers and furniture must be approved by staff through HPC, just to clarify that it is separate from the sidewalk cafe approval, and application fees must be paid. Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Payton regarding this item? Any questions or comments? Yes, Mayor Wilson? or comments? Yes, Mayor Wilson?
I'm assuming there's a door open between the two tables, and that's why there's probably not so many two tables allowed in this venue?
Actually, it's under the awning. So you see the four posts across the front of where the tables are. Those are the awning posts, and the door is just to the left of that.
The door into the entrance?
Yes. They've taken that building, which was a two-suite building, and combined it into one for the cafe. And they'll also have outdoor seating along the side and in the rear, but it is on their property.
Any further questions, comments, clarifications? Yes, Councilmember Beeson? Okay. Motion to approve by Councilmember Beeson, second by Councilmember Hills. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Item number three, consideration of approval for the 2025 Community Work Program, Community Improvement Plan, or Element, CIE update. That'll be presented by Ms. Payton as well?
Yes.
Just as a matter of a preface here, this is an item that you saw a couple of months ago, and per the state requirements, it was transmitted -- you approved it for transmittal to the State Department of Community Affairs and also Atlanta Regional Commission. And then they sent it back. They did not have any comments, as I understand. And now there's a formal process of adoption, so that's why it's before you again. All right, Ms. Payton?
Yes. You said it so well. It's the final approval to adopt what was sent and approved to be transmitted to ARC. We received the approval with no comments back on August 26.
All right. Any questions regarding this item? This, again, is the adoption, proposed adoption. It was transmitted. No comments from Atlanta Regional Commission or Department of Community Affairs. It's back for you for final adoption.
So to clarify, absolutely nothing has changed since the July 14 version that we previously approved. Correct.
Right.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
It's just being brought back to you per the state requirements. All right. We have a motion. Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Mortland. Any further comments or questions, discussion? All right. Seeing none. All in favor? All right. That passes unanimously. Is that the old mill?
Somebody else's mill.
All right. Item number four, consideration for the Mayor and/or City Administrator to award a contract with Inliner Solutions LLC for the stormwater lining package project in an amount not to exceed $355,471. Mr. Brian Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This first item -- it's really loud. Sorry. Can everybody still hear me? I don't know. No, I hope that is not the pipe. Customer Mort, that's not very nice. This is a good item to approve. Let's not confuse it with --
Steward's of water.
Yeah. All right. So the purpose of this project is to rehabilitate 18 pipes and structures along nine different roads using approved methods to mitigate potential stormwater impacts to these areas. The city advertised this project on the city's website to our pre-qualified contractors. We got two bids back ranging from $355,471 to $362,995, with the low bid being submitted by Inliner Solutions. They've done work with us in the past. They've done good work, and we recommend them to do this project. We're also recommending an amount of $35,547 to be allocated for unforeseen conditions. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any questions or comments regarding this item? All right. Seeing none. I just want to make one comment. Certainly, we appreciate, again, the funding's been allocated for these types of projects, taking a proactive approach to be able to go out and ensure infrastructure is in excellent working condition and will continue to do so. Obviously, these infrastructure projects are extremely important, so we thank Director Watson, Ms. Izzo, and for the team, and of course, the Mayor and Council for allocating these resources to be able to go out and address these matters before there is a problem. So thank you very much. Yes, Mayor Wilson?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I echo your sentiments?
Please.
From your experience, as you know, working in other governing authorities, other municipalities and counties, it's exceptional when you have a local government that's taking steps that are above and beyond in terms of usually governments fall in reactionary mode. A lot of the spending is reactionary. The great example of Brian Watson, Sharon, your team, continuing to put the city, thinking about it five years and 10 years and 20 years down the road, and through the budgetary measures, the budget discipline of the city and your leadership and Bill Godshell, continuing to find ways to orientate money, to invest in the city's future. For you, this has to be a great kind of thing, because I know historically you're dealing with reactionary stormwater issues rather than somebody's -- a group of people, a group of leadership that's thinking about in the future.
Yes, yes. No, it's absolutely correct, and certainly glad to be working in an environment where we do take these measures. Obviously, the Dog Park that I mentioned at the outset is something that's highly visible and seen and enjoyed. Stormwater pipes, infrastructure underneath the ground are rarely seen unless there's a problem. And so it's great to be able to get out in front of some of these issues and ensure that our infrastructure is --
Yeah, to your point, it's not sexy, and you don't get a lot of credit for spending money on infrastructure you don't see. Paving, to some degree, yes, although the city historically has been too low on its budgets for paving and for repaving for its streets. But storms are a perfect example. Occasionally, you'll see a story in the press, right, nationally, regionally, even in Atlanta, something breaks, right? Usually, it's water infrastructure. Occasionally, it's storm infrastructure. But people -- and then everybody says, "Well, why didn't you take care of it?" Well, it's because usually elected leadership responds to reactionary thinking, reactionary spending. It's a whole different discipline to be out front and say, "Look, we're going to invest, so we don't have those problems." Say that you eliminate 100% of problems, but as long as you continue to invest, as part of the vision of this team, this list here, this team, becoming the number one family community in America, you continue to take care of things so people don't have to worry about them.
Yep. Absolutely correct. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Sells?
Director Watson, I do find it sexy. I just want you to know. Sorry that the mayor doesn't, but I did that.
I do, too. Thank you.
He does.
All right. With that, do we have any further comments or questions regarding this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Please.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Beeson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All right. That passes unanimously as well. Item number five, consideration for the Mayor and/or City Administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County for Water Service and Sewer Billing, also presented by Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. The purpose of this item is to renew our intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, with Fulton County for water service and sewer billing. The city has previously had three IGAs with Fulton County for this service since 1962. A couple of key elements that are in this IGA that I want to point out, it allows Fulton County to supply Roswell with water through seven emergency interconnections that we have throughout the water utility's footprint. It establishes a standard communication process between Roswell and Fulton County during emergencies. And a good example of that is this past weekend on Riverside Park, when Fulton County had a break, they had reached out, and they'd actually, through our communication, was able to purchase water from our utility. And it allows Roswell to act as a billing collection agent for sewer services on behalf of Fulton County for a 10% commission. The agreement term for this new IGA will be in effect for 15 years with a five-year extension upon written notice. And with that, I'll take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Ask Mayor Wilson?
Yes, sir. I'm enjoying punishing David. This question is for you, David, Sharon, and Brian. So if, in your grand scheme of things, you have a lot of long-term plans, some of those may matriculate, some of those may not, one of them is a potential takeover of the entire water system for the city of Roswell. Right now, I think you supply 33% or 37% of the water. 33% of the residents, approximately, in the city of Roswell get city of Roswell water. The remainder, like residents like myself, get Fulton County water. A couple of years ago, you guys began to matriculate a long-term plan of possible taking over the entire water system. Would this IGA permit you to continue down that path if, in fact, that was to occur three, four, five years down the road?
Yeah. This IGA only pertains to the footprint of the current water utility. So what do you think that's outside of that would be completely separate? So this does not prohibit us from having those discussions with Fulton County.
And it wouldn't prohibit you from ultimately matriculating a deal on that sense if that came to that?
Nope.
End to end. Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Watson pertaining to this item? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Mortland, second by Councilmember Sells. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All right. That passes unanimously. Well, that does conclude the agenda for the committee's meetings of September 9, 2025. Seeing no further business to conduct, we will entertain a motion of adjournment. Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Mortland. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.